Well, that's good.
Good afternoon. At this time, if everyone would please take a seat. Welcome to the Volusia County School Board meeting. Today is Tuesday, April the 8th, 2025. In just a moment, I'm going to ask those of you here in the audience to join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be presented today by Blue Lake Elementary, followed by the National Anthem from Deland High. And then we will remain standing for a moment of silence and reflection. So at this time, will you please stand and join me?
Hello, I'm Ms. Silver. I teach over at Blue Lake Elementary. I am the A.L.A. teacher for second grade, and we want to say the Pledge of Allegiance for you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with our liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. At this time, I'd like to introduce those that are here at the front with me. Here on my far left, I have Mrs. Donna Brosmer, representing District 4; then Mrs. Krista Goodrich, representing District 2; our school board attorney, Dr. Gilbert Evans. Moving over to my far right, I have Ms. Celeste Gilmore, she's our agency clerk; then we have Mrs. Jessie Thompson, representing District 3; Mr. Ruben Clone, our vice chair, representing District 5; and then to my immediate right, I have Dr. Carmen Bagobin, our superintendent; and I, Ms. Jamie Haynes, representing District 1, in your chair at this time. Items for approval on this agenda this evening are items 1.03, 2.02, 6.02, and 17.01. Public participation times. Prior to voting on the consent agenda, you may fill out a card if you wish to speak about any item on the consent agenda. You just need to see the ladies over here on the far right along the wall, and they will give you a card to fill out. We also, at 6:00 PM, will have, you may fill out a yellow card for items of general interest pertaining to public education in Volusia County. A total of up to 15 minutes will be provided for public comment at that time, and each of you have three, up to three minutes to speak. Then time will be provided for public comment on any action item before a board vote is called on that item. Time will also be provided at the end of the meeting for public comment for items of general interest pertaining to public education before the board superintendent or attorney open up anything for discussion or announcement. Our district vision statement is to create lifelong learners for an ever-changing global society. At this time, I invite my colleagues here, if they'd like to share anything. Mrs. Brosmer?
Thank you. Last week, I went to Tallahassee with the Daytona Chamber, and I had the opportunity to meet with members and bill sponsors and what have you. But in particular, I attended a committee meeting, at least in part because it was pouring rain and I couldn't get to the meeting I meant to attend. And there was a math bill up that I did want to hear presented, so I attended the Careers in Workforce Subcommittee. And at that meeting, there was a presentation by a group called Florida Youth Shine. I had not heard of them before, but they are an advocacy nonprofit of young adults from the foster care system or who have been homeless. These young people were absolutely astonishing. They were, it was wonderful to listen to them. Some of these kids had been dropped by their foster parents on their 18th birthday because the parents stopped getting checks. I didn't even realize that it was possible for adoptive parents to do the same thing, but I have a friend who is a teacher at Atlantic High School, who recently took in a senior in one of her classes because the same thing had happened to her. On her 18th birthday, her adoptive mother kicked her out of the house, and she, a lot of the services that are available to the foster kids and the nonprofits, I mean, the homeless kids, I'm sorry, are not available if they don't have an address. So my friend and her husband have taken in this young lady, and she's now applying to Embry-Riddle. During the time that I worked in the foster care system, my main area of interest was the kids who were aging out, because they really are kind of dropped off into the deep end of the pool with no support unless they know where to access it. The kids who were making the presentations had stories that had everybody choked up in the room, but one of the things that came out of it for me was that a lot of the counties in Florida have chapters of this group, but Volusia County doesn't. So because of the fact that we have foster kids and we have homeless kids in our county, I thought it would be maybe a good referral for us to be able to have a chapter here. And so I've contacted them to see about doing that, about starting a chapter here. And there's also another group that facilitates access to the state services for these kids. It's the Alan Madden Foundation, and the man who is their communications person used to work with Bikers Against Trafficking, but he is also on the Deland Chamber Board. And so that is another group that I would like for us to put on our list of referral agencies, and I'll try to put them in touch with the school district staff. But the bill in particular that was being presented that day was to address the fact that the state provides free tuition for foster kids and homeless kids, but they very often can't take advantage of it because they don't have any place to live. And so this bill would provide housing for them for as long as they are qualified to be in college, as long as their grades are maintained. So it was a great meeting. I was very happy. I stumbled into that one, and I'm hoping that we can make use of both of those groups in, here in Volusia.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich?
I was also in Tallahassee with the Chamber and had a great experience there. Not going to go into it as much, but that was a fantastic experience. And then last week, we had the Arts Voco Gala, and it was the first one that they've had, and the purpose of the Arts Voco Season in Volusia County is to bring awareness to the arts, to showcase our young and older artists of every type of art. And when they raise money, the beneficiary of those funds is Volusia County School District. So it's a wonderful thing going on. If you haven't had a chance, look at their website and go and see all the amazing art that's happening, whether it's music, drama, dance, visual arts by our students here in Volusia. And then the other event I just wanted to highlight, which I'm so sad, I was very excited. I made a video, because our superintendent always shows up with a video, so I created a video about it, but the sound isn't working, so that's a shame. But the video was about the special at VIX, which was this past weekend at Mainland High School, and it was a wonderful event. I, like, my mom even flew in Friday night to volunteer, so we had quite a few of the Goodrich Group there volunteering, and everyone had an amazing experience. There was bocce, there was soccer, there was basketball. I was on the tennis courts. There was track and field cheerleading, and I am missing someone, whoever I'm missing, I'm so sorry. But I spoke with one of the ESE educators over at Seabreeze High School, and this is what I really wanted to focus on with it, is number one, we still need more volunteers. We're still short 50 this year. But number two, is at Seabreeze, they have a pretty long history and a very strong history of having unified partners work with their ESE students. And what a unified partner, unified athlete is, is it's a general education student that partners up with a special education student and helps them with the sports that they're working on, and they become a partner, and they compete together. It brings a tremendous amount of value to the ESE student, but I'm going to say that it probably brings even more value to the general education student. So I would love to see that expanded, and we can talk to Seabreeze about how they're doing it. I believe we had more of this before COVID, and then post-COVID it kind of changed, but I'd love to see more of that happening in our schools, just so that we can all learn to understand each other a little better. So those were my highlights.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you. So we've reached that time of year where there are a million things going on every single day and every single night, so thank you to everyone who attends these, to our principals, who are going above and beyond, parents, God bless all of you through this time. Spruce Creek High School, some of you may or may not have noticed, I have orange in my hair. At Spruce Creek High School, their robotics team went on to compete, and I told them, and Ms. Goodrich was there to witness it, if they could go to Worlds, I would dye my whole head orange. And it's bittersweet, because I didn't want to dye my hair orange, but I was really pulling for them. The team didn't make it, however, Ryan Hubbs, an 11th grader, did make it, so I did a little bit of the hair for him, but so very proud of everyone who competed. They built this robot that was phenomenal. It was so cool. So that was great, and congratulations to them. The Elementary Science Expo was at the center at Deltona, and it was fantastic. I judged one of the elementary school science fairs, and there were some amazing projects, and there were some great ones on food. Those always really interest me, those and the ones to do with laundry. So thank you to all those children, parents, who did some amazing projects. Jamie, I'll let you talk about the Taylor High School grant, because that's all you. But we also have the Workforce Expo for juniors and seniors at Mainland High. Thank you to all the businesses who came out. There were a ton of kids. I love that we had it at a high school, and more importantly, indoors, because there was AC. Love it out at the baseball field, but that AC felt nice. We had our DAC meeting this past Wednesday, and I want to thank those from the district that came to present. They presented on testing, which was extremely informative, and so if you sit on your school's SAT committee, I highly encourage you, if you weren't at the DAC meeting, to ask about it, because I think there's a lot of questions that parents have about testing, and they aren't really sure about certain things as far as what the district does and what the state does and what information's given. So that was a fantastic presentation. In Deland, there is a CTE pitch competition. Super fun, great ideas. There's some Shark Tank presentations coming up soon. Like, these are just fun, when the kids really get to explore and they're excited about it, and they have these grand ideas, I just, I love it. VASSA had their celebrating education event. Thank you to everyone who came out for that. Huge event. There's so many art events coming, and I know many of us love our arts in our schools. And so Art House in Port Orange has been hosting them, and they had one for their AP and ACE students. And the students described where their art came from. They had to really, like, dig in, and I, you cry, like, you really do. You can feel just the depth of this, and it's, to me, art, when it moves you, like, that's just beautiful. And there were so many great pieces, and the Art House is also having one this Friday for their IB students. So I highly encourage anyone to go out and see that. It is free to the public. And last, but certainly not least, I believe it's seven of our high schools are getting renovations through the Schoolway Cafe over the summer, and this is through Schoolway Cafe dollars, so no one get mad at me, because I know we discussed budget a lot earlier today, but the renovations are so beautiful. And so I was at Spruce Creek to see what they were doing. They had some students come in for a committee, just to say what they did like, what they didn't like, what changes they thought there'd be, and there were students from every single grade level. So I really want to thank the team from Schoolway Cafe for bringing our students in and listening to their input, because they're the ones that have to eat there. So just thank you to all those teams and all those people, and good luck to everyone out there as we're wrapping up the school year. Thank you. Sorry, that was a lot. I apologize.
Mr. Cologne?
I can't top that. So earlier today, we had Advent Health here as our partners, and I know that this past weekend, they did the sports physicals, and I think it's, we're not only grateful for them, for their partnership, but they did 1108, 11, excuse me, 1108 physicals, 960 EKGs, and so again, thank you to Advent Health for that. This past weekend, I had the honor of going to the HOSA, which is Health Occupation Students of America, State Competition in Orlando. I had the privilege of judging two nights, and I can tell you, the future of healthcare is bright. Our students just do an amazing job. Special shout out to Pine Ridge, who had three students who are going to move on to national competition. I can tell you, there were 3,900 or so students at the competing in various activities, and so in a couple of categories, our Pine Ridge students were in first place, and then in athletic training, he also was in the top, so he'll be moving on to the States as well. So I look forward to having them come and join us. It was just this past weekend, so I know we couldn't get it on here anytime soon, so kudos to them. Also, today was mentioned, and I'm going to mention it here, Advent Health, in the next three days, they're going to be offering 10 full-ride scholarships to Advent Health University for students who would like to be in nursing program. So free ride, 10 winners in Volusia County, so it's posted all over Volusia County's Facebook page, if you are interested in that. We attended the ESE Awards through the Volusia County Exceptional Student Council of sorts, and it was just a great night to recognize, to recognize the educators across our county who support our students. And I believe that may be it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. So a few additional highlights. We've been visiting some of the schools on the west side of the county, and because they've earned the Danny Gannon Academic Excellence Award, and so we were out at Volusia Pines Elementary, because Volusia Pines Elementary had showed excellent growth, and so they got the banner, they got the check, they got the plaque, and what was the most heartening piece, they had students come in, and so when you bring the business community in and they get to hear from students, it's so important. And so the students told them things that they felt they had, were tarred to improve on, and who had helped them improve on that, and that's what it's all about. Also, Mrs. Thompson and I were out at Taylor Middle High School. This is the third trip out there so far this year where Taylor has been awarded a check for different things that the students are doing. They competed in a competition early on in the year, and they were awarded a $5,000 check, and you just should have seen the kids' faces when they got $5,000. And it was something that they competed in on social media about sharing all of their sporting events and things like that, and so they won $5,000. And then Mr. McCullough and I were back out there, and they won $500 for improving their attendance and lowering their chronic absenteeism. So then we went out there, it's been a week and a half ago, and we were out there, Ms. Thompson and I, and so they had no idea why we were out there. Well, a grant had been written through our CTE program for them on Healthcare Career Explore and Excel Grant, is what it was called. And so we were out there to see them awarded the check. And so while we're on stage with Dr. Bagobin, we kind of challenged them. We said, we've been out here, and you've received $5,000, and you've received $500, and does anybody want to take a guess on how much you're getting this time? And so one of the students finally raised their hand and said, do you think we, like, are we getting $10,000 maybe? I mean, and they seriously thought, wow, what we could do with our medical program out there if we just got $10,000. Well, when we turned the check around, you should have seen their faces, like, it took a few minutes for it to register. Dr. Bagobin was kind of like, so, did you get your $10,000? And one person finally raised his hand and said, it was a young man, and he said $101,250. And the teacher who teaches those programs, he had no idea, because we kept the secret from everybody, and he immediately said to them, you know how we've talked about all this equipment we need for you guys to be able to practice on and all that? He said, we're getting that equipment. We will have that equipment. And like, the whole auditorium just erupted, because that is, it may not seem like a lot to you or to some of our larger schools, but when you go up into that community and they get a check to support their medical program that they're doing out there for that amount, it was amazing for them. So we want to thank everyone that participated in that. And then also, some of us attended the Volusia League of Cities Dinner, and that's where we, you know, we try to work with our cities on the different things and build relationships with them. But the final thing I want to talk to you today, and it kind of ties in even with that grant for Taylor, there is House Bill 5101, and a companion bill, Senate Bill 2510, right now, that can negatively impact our students. And we're here to positively impact our students. And so for those of you here in the audience, for parents listening at home, anyone that goes back and replays this, we have a short window right now to reach out and contact our House of Representatives and our senators. And any parent that has been sending me an email, I've been replying back with the names and the email addresses for the people that'll be voting to make a choice on this. But basically, what happened in October, we were asked to fill out a survey and submit it to the state. On the survey, it asked for us to show the amount of funding that we spent under these categories. Dual enrollment. Some of you in here may be in dual enrollment, or you're planning on signing up. Both of my children did dual enrollment. It's a wonderful program. So dual enrollment, IB, International Baccalaureate, I know we've got Spruce Creek High in the house, Spruce Creek and Deland have those programs, AP, ACE, CTE, and our CAPE programs, along with early graduation. Every one of those programs directly impacts students in Volusia County, because under the CTE and CAPE, it can be any program your child's involved in. They could be involved in FFA. We've got schools here that have large numbers of kids in FFA. The funding that we've been getting for many years from the state for those programs has allowed us to continue to expand those programs. It pays for the testing that the students take so that they can walk out with certifications already in a field that they're interested in pursuing. That's why each and every one of us is here. But based on every district in Florida submitting that chart between October and November, that information was collected. that information was collected and put into a piece and I wanna, I always want to believe the best intentions, but that chart needed, it had one other column, the other column said other, but it needed an additional column besides other, it needed a column that said charter because charter money from the state that flows into Volusia County as a go-between that flows straight back out to charter schools goes in through that piece and so we filled it out correctly, we filled out how much was being spent on our students directly under each of those programs, but then there was not a charter column, so in the other column, we had to put the charter money, so all of a sudden that looked like, oh, they're not really funding all these other programs because they've got this money over in other, well, other didn't stay in Volusia, it wasn't that we created some other, other went directly from us to the charter schools, so they're looking at cutting the money we receive for all those programs by fifty percent, so we can each contact them, we can write to them, but you want to know who will make the difference, you, parents, your children, if you have a child that recently went through one of those programs and graduated, all it takes is a letter telling a story, I have a young lady who was who found out about it and she's written a letter to tell them what the program she was involved in in Volusia County, what a difference it made in her life and already what she's able to do because of having that opportunity, so please, when you leave here tonight, consider taking a moment to write to our local legislators and reference House Bill five one zero one and Senate Bill two five one zero and ask them to please not cut the funding and it's not just in Volusia, it's across the entire state that they'll be cutting that funding, but please to not cut that funding because that funding makes a world of difference for our students that are involved in all of those programs, so I'm asking tonight, I don't usually ask you to do anything, but this is important because every dollar that we lose will keep us from adding programs and adding more students to those programs for next year and the coming years and then maybe next year they'll send us out a new chart and they'll put all the columns on it and we can report the information accurately and we won't be losing any more money, but that's all I have for this evening about that because we need some assistance to keep that funding, we're moving on at this time to item one point zero three, the approval of the minutes, board members, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last board meeting and so do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne, thank you, Ms. Thompson, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all of those in favor of approving the minutes from the last school board meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously, we are now down to item two point zero one, Dr. Balgobin, are there any agenda changes before the agenda is presented to the board for approval?
No, Madam Chair, none from my end.
All right, board members, nothing for the, okay, so do I have a motion to approve the presented agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brosmer, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of approving the agenda as it's been presented for tonight's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously, we are now up to item three point zero one, Dr. Balgobin, it's your turn to share all the things that have been happening in Volusia County.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, actually you guys have assisted me this afternoon because there are some of the announcements that I've crossed off, but uh good afternoon to all of you in the audience, it's always so nice when we see our staff members here seated in our audience, but most importantly when we see our VCS students, the reason for our existence, so good afternoon to you guys, VCS students, good afternoon.
Sleepy.
I I think they're gonna be fully awake, they're here to be recognized, Mr. Cologne, and for those of you joining us at home from home, thank you for tuning in, um just a couple announcements, we do have two uh videos, but we will be showing those at the end, Chair, Latinos in Action Conference, if you recall, uh, Mr. Cologne, three years ago, three years ago, we started with this organization working in Volusia County, we started with it with a tiered approach, we started with our high school and then brought it into our middle school and and now in our elementary schools, but basically it's a program that truly focuses on empowering our multilingual students, multilingual students when it comes to youth leadership, cultural appreciation and community engagement, it also inspires creativity and academic excellence, so expanding into the elementary schools, that's that's really powerful, it shows that that tiered approach has worked and when I visit schools and I talk to our students, especially students from a multilingual background, they always mention how this program has impacted their leadership abilities, I want to thank you also, Mr. Cologne, for agreeing uh three years ago to be a part, a liaison for for this uh program because our students will be participating at UCF in a leadership seminar that's coming up, also, three years ago, we started our district pitch competition and as you know, in every single one of our high schools, we have entrepreneurship in our high schools, so how fitting it is that our students have an opportunity to work on a project, right, and present that project where they have judges, which pretty much um business partners and volunteers from our community join and provide feedback, but also provide that opportunity for students to, you know, win that uh local competition, enter into a more national competition and so forth for their project, I want to thank uh Mrs. Thompson, Ms. Goodrich, Dr. Vaie and everyone else if you've attended, thank you for attending our third annual pitch competition, I'd like to congratulate all of the participants, including our top winners, so the first place, Spruce Creek Senior Gio Hoffman and he actually presented on tackling food insecurity and waste, so that was his project, he won first place, second place went to uh Spruce Creek Junior Peyton Bonino and he, his project was about creating a nickel-free jewelry um cleaning system and then our third place went to The Essential Cube, which is a mainland senior Peyton Gardner and that's about simplifying the college move-in process, isn't that creative, college move-in process, so Gio will be representing VCS next month at the Nifty Southeast Regional Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge in Miami, I believe last year uh the the student that represented us was actually a winner and went to national, so a huge thank you to, again, all of our business partners that volunteers their time to be their mentors and supporters, including Stetson Baptist Church because they made this event possible for us, so again, thank you, we do have a video, but we will show that at the end, um Jen Taylor and the amazing scientists that we have here in Volusia County along with all of our field teachers and in in staff members, fifty years of celebration, so for fifty years, it really shows you how valued science STEM is and protected, right, in our district, don't wonder, I believe we're second or third in the state, right, Jen? But again, congratulations to all of our brilliant, brilliant, how many of you in here, show of hands, our fifth graders?
How many of you participated in the fifth grade science elementary expo when you were in fifth grade?
Raise your hands.
Beautiful.
Here we go.
The pipeline, there you go, so they had an opportunity to showcase their projects at the 50th Annual Science Expo recently, um we know that VCS will continue to lead in this field thanks to Jen and her entire team, but also our s- our our field teachers and staff members, thank you for helping us lead and now when it comes to the Tomoka Regional Science Fair, we're preparing our students for beyond that experience, um in it did, we have a video for that, I did say that, right, okay, that those are my two videos, I will make up for the one where the voice was not captured in yours. Atlantic High School, last week we were there, we always say that when it comes to the safety and security of our students and staff, that will always and remain our number one priority, so last week at Atlantic High School, Sheriff Chip Wood, his team and our team who were there to pretty much uh implement the first innovative AI-driven weapon detection technology instrument in for our county, but also in our state, I will tell you that this system for security, it really not only enhances, but it will process up to two thousand individuals per hour, after that was showcased, we received several calls from other districts who will be coming and actually visiting Atlantic to see how that, what that looks like and how it works, so again, I want to thank the team, Student Services Division along with our captain and everybody that worked behind the scene because you guys did many visits, you piloted this, we studied and examined this at Olson and we were able to implement it successfully for this pilot here at Atlantic, but thank you guys for all that you've done behind the scenes, Mr. Cologne, uh you talked about this Volusia Council for exceptional children, so actually, I would like to congratulate Monica Haynes, she uh she was or is our ESE Parent of the Year and she represents Creekside Middle, Maria Costida- Costidakis, can we pull up the 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 um, the names please, guys, do we have them, okay, there you go, ESE Support Staff of the Year and she represents Seabreeze High, Emily Chris Light, she has been uh recognized as the ESE Inclusion Teacher of the Year, she represents Ormond Beach Elementary, Dr. Jenny Hughes, ESE Administrator of the Year, representing University High, Zachary Campor- Camporosi, ESE Paraprofessional of the Year, New S- New Smyrna Beach High, Daisy Cordine, ESE Rocky Teacher of the Year, Rookie Teacher of the Year, Rocky, Rookie Teacher of the Year, Timbercrest Elementary and Claire Bill Cologne Ortiz, Teacher of the Year, Timbercrest Elementary, you're not competitive at all, are you?
Not at all.
Um and two more, CTE Workforce Expo, if you recall, we said that it was important to us to have at least a minimum of three hundred paid internship opportunities, recall that, board members, so last week, we had, and thank you, you were there with us, um, Ms. Thompson, we joined our juniors and seniors at mainland, we had over four hundred attendees, we had seventy business partners who participated and at that point in time, three hundred and twenty paid internship opportunities, so we have already. But again, we could not have done this without our community, without our business partners who truly understands and knows that schools don't exist in isolation to the community, that we are a part of our community and that our students, some of them seated right here, are our future, so thank you to all of our business partners and last but not least, some important dates, we have April twentieth, which is Easter Sunday, um April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, it's National After School Professionals Appreciation Week, guys, to all of our before and after school program, all the staff members that works, but also our school-based staff, thank you for the extended time that you put in to service the needs of our students and April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, it's also National Public School Volunteer Week and we have hundreds and hundreds of volunteers here in Volusia County that that puts in their own time, right, to to meet the needs of our students, to meet and and exceed the needs of our students, we want to do a shout out and and let them know how appreciated they are for volunteering their time to make a difference in their community now and beyond, so with that said, I'm go- we're going to show you these two videos and that will conclude my announcements, no, two videos, I have three?
That's three.
For the month.
Two.
We took coffee about.
Two, I I did want to make up for.
Go ahead.
We have Volusia County Schools Pitch Competition, it's a district competition, where high schools who are learning entrepreneurship, they've created a business and they're going to pitch that business uh with twelve slides that go over a variety of things from starting up the business and operating costs, a variety of other things, how they're gonna market the business.
The Essential Cube is a cost-effective and family-focused uh tote that comes with all essentials that you don't know you need yet, it also allows for transition from being dependent on your parents, becoming independent.
With coming this idea, I'm hoping that I can help not only myself or for future kids who want to go to college and not feel very overwhelmed by it.
Either you have to spend hundreds of dollars on jewelry or you have to choose something that's gonna only look good for two months and also make you uncomfortable.
So you want to make an impact.
Yeah.
I love it.
They always have these out-of-the-box ideas and just to hear them describe it and see how excited they get, um just really reminds me why we do this and why we're here and that's why this is one of the more fun events to go to because they really have creative liberties here.
When I was looking into this, I noticed obviously there's areas without any clean water.
It's not just about the grade, but it is also for an opportunity to actually win real money that they can put in their pockets and put towards actually building out and growing their concept as well.
So proud of the students for them to take that leap, to be able to be in front of our business partners to pitch their ideas, very grateful um of being in such a great district that thinks very innovatively to support our students in this quest of entrepreneurship.
Very good, high five, both of you.
Size, weight and material of the balls being dropped from different heights makes a difference in creator depth and width.
Welcome to the 50th Annual Elementary Science Expo for Volusia County Schools, these students have worked so hard on their projects, they have one at their school and they've made it to the Elementary District Science Expo.
This is a huge thing for Volusia County Schools because this is the beginning of the pipeline that moves our scientists through as they enter into the Tomoka Regional Science Fair.
It warms my heart because this lets me know that him being out in society and being productive and being able to speak to his peers or strangers will take him further in life.
It's an incredible experience getting to watch these kids, not just her, but these other kids grow and get to see them mold into, you know, these awesome, incredible human beings and they get confidence through this.
If it's sunny outside, the sun can come through your windows and shine on here to make it melt faster.
They are so passionate about it and I think that passion is what gets them over that hurdle because sometimes talking to adults can be intimidating, especially answering some of these questions and so they're just so passionate about it though, it just comes out and it pours out through these projects.
Happy 50th Anniversary Elementary Science Expo.
And that concludes. Thank you, all right, at this time then, we're moving on to recognitions, item four point zero one, State Science Fair and Envirothon Student Recognition, Dr. Balgobin.
Chair, I'm really excited about this, aren't you?
Yes.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Jen Taylor, our coordinator for our our science division, to come up because there's three recognitions, she's going to lead these recognitions and we're going to assist, part one, it's in regard to the State Science Fair, part two, part two, our Volusia Manufacturers Association, Jen, I'm missing one, sorry.
First part is Envirothon.
Yeah, Envirothon, sorry, Envirothon is the first, second, right Jen, State Science Fair and the third is the Volusia Manufacturers Association, so we will assist you, Jen.
Perfect, perfect, I am so lucky to have the job that I have, to be able to work with all the folks behind me and to be able to celebrate our scientists that are behind us, um they truly are scientists, they have done original research and they have presented not only at the school, the district, the state, um so I can't wait to tell you more about them, so good evening Superintendent Dr. Balgobin, Chairman Jamie Haynes and members of the school board, at this time, if the Director and Co-Director of Envirothon, Louise Chapman. At this time, if the Director and Co-Director of Envirothon, Louise Chapman, and Will Hopson would come forward, STEM Specialist Amy Monahan. So our first recognition is Envirothon. Each year, Volusia County Schools' Science Department hosts a Regional Envirothon Day, led by our Director Louise Chapman and our Co-Chair Will Hopson from Atlantic High School. Envirothon is a competition that occurs across the globe, not just in the United States. The Florida Envirothon is an outdoor natural resource education program and competition for high school students in grades nine through 12. In the field, students are challenged to work as a team, to answer written questions, and conduct hands-on projects focused on environmental issues. Students from all over Florida join to explore the environment in five different disciplines: forestry, wildlife, aquatics, soils, and current events. Envirothon has become a community event with volunteers from all over Volusia County donating their time, expertise, and financial support. When you talk about volunteers, we live off of volunteers in our department. The Regional Envirothon Competition was held at Rose Bay, and each event was led by an expert in each of the five disciplines. In addition, this year's sponsors included Duke Energy, Futures, Volusia Soil and Water Conservancy District, Riverside Conservancy, Marine Discovery Center, Volusia County Environmental Management, and Volusia County Parks Recreation and Culture. We couldn't do it without our sponsors. At this time, I would love to recognize the Advancing Glaciers from Spruce Creek High School. If you would please come forward along with your coach, Josh Platt, and stand behind us. So this year's first place, we're selected to continue to state, and I think we have an update, Louise Chapman.
We do have an update. This past weekend was the state competition, and Spruce Creek's Advancing Glaciers came second in the state out of 21 teams.
So if you could just give us a little wave when I call your names. Sidney Mountcastle, Mylan Van, Insha Majid, Jordan Platt, Bettina Spitzer, Belle Soleil, Noah Serrano. All right. And our coach, Josh Platt. Absolutely amazing. Thank you and congratulations. Time, we're gonna take pictures, and Dr. Balgobin has something for you. This is the trophy that they won. All right, let's go.
Can't see him. Make sure you're sticking through.
Chance, you need to say something. Good job. Well.
I was put you in charge of that.
Science, this is science now.
So not to brag, share a little bit, because you were just telling me how many years now that they've won some state competition.
It's been over 10 years now that they have won here in the district.
So, it's, it's, again, it's not me, it's, exists because Ms. Chapman, right? Ms. Chapman makes this happen. Everybody else in science is fantastic, but Ms. Chapman really needs a round of applause for this. Just fortunate to coach the kids, and I do very little. The kids do all of it. We missed first place by nine points this year, so they were super close. We were hoping to go to nationals, but next year, we're bringing back five of those kids. We'll be on the team again next year, so they're going for it again, provided we can win locally, because the competition's tough here before we even go to state. So thank you all for the honor. It's all for the kids, and we appreciate your support for it. Thank you.
So our second recognition for tonight is the Temoca Science and Engineering Fair State Delegate Recognition. And to my left, I have our Secondary Science Specialist, as well as our Fair Director, Mr. Jeremy Blinn. So for 58 years, and I believe you were in the first fair?
We're both part of this tradition.
We were both part of this tradition as kids, as teachers, and now here at the district, which is pretty cool. I still have my trophy, do you?
Oh, I have my plaque.
Yeah, I saw, okay.
My third-place mathematics plaque from Temoca Regional.
I, I won first.
1989. Say it that way.
I have my first-place trophy. It's on my desk, by the way, if you would come by and see it.
He won first and he won third.
Yes, yes, just, you know.
Holders, I was there first.
No, there's, it's true. I'll, I'll give him that one. I'll give him that one. So it's, it's absolutely amazing to think that for 58 years, Volusia County Schools' Science Department has organized the Temoca Regional Science and Engineering Fair. And we are so thankful to our volunteers. This year, Stetson University, once again, for the sixth year in a row, hosted our event, and we're a big group, so that's a lot. In addition, we give out special awards, and we couldn't do it without all of the donations from the universities, nonprofits, engineering firms, that provide thousands and thousands of dollars each year for our Volusia County students. To name just a few organizations, such as the Manatee Festival Committee in Orange City, they provide a hundred-dollar check for each student that receives a first place in all 25 categories. That's pretty amazing. The Daytona Beach Chapter of the Florida Engineering Society provides awards that kids can't wait to hear who wins each year. They're called the DaVinci Awards. The top award is $2,000 to one student. Cash, check. We also need to mention our longest special award partnership that spans decades with the heart of Volusia, and their continued support for multiple special awards each year. The Science Fair season starts as early as the summer. Some of these kids work with universities all summer long in, in June, and they continue until a week ago, a couple weeks ago? Yeah.
It goes June to June.
June to June. This guy goes June to June, too.
A, a non-science fair season. There's no such thing.
There's no such thing. Our judges this year selected 20 projects to compete in the 70th Florida State Science and Engineering Fair in March. The Florida State Science and Engineering Fair is the largest middle school and high school pre-college science and engineering competition in the world. Only the High School International Science and Engineering Fair is larger. So at this time, I would love to recognize those students' 20 projects that were selected to compete. If you would please stand where you are as I call your name, and then we will call you forward for certificates in just a moment. So in the Florida State Junior Division, Evan Aldridge, Burnside Tech. J.U. Hilly, Silver Sands Middle School. Hanania, River Springs Middle School. Sylvie Nazarian, Orman Beach Middle School. Aisha Patel, Hinson Middle School. La Hanania, River Springs Middle School. Annabelle Dupree, Creekside Middle School. Bradley Moon, River Springs Middle School. So for the Senior Division, would you please stand? Insha Majid, Spruce Creek High School. Lynn Van, Spruce Creek High School. Brooklyn Bernstein, New Smyrna Beach High School. Reese Gonzalez, Deland High. Sophia Rizzo, Deland High. Aldeeb, Spruce Creek High School. Summer Samar, Spruce Creek High School. Jared Heans, Burnside Tech. Lily Downs, Deltona High School. Jordan Platt, Spruce Creek High School. Sean Akia, Spruce Creek High School. Dylan Tran, Spruce Creek High School. Abigail Aldridge, Burnside Tech. Amanda King, Burnside Tech. Alexander Anderson, Spruce Creek High School. But not least, Jaron Agdassi, Spruce Creek High School. If you all will stand for just one more minute, we've got an update. How did state go?
Let me tell you. First of all, I'm so proud of every one of them that made it to state. They represented Volusia County Schools and Temoca Regional exceptionally. Seventy-five percent of them had their name recognized at this world's largest middle school and high school pre-collegiate STEM competition. It's a little-known fact that Florida is that influential in the pipeline in the world science pre-collegiate research. So let me tell you what happened when we were there. Middle school students, in chemistry, in physics, and plant sciences, we had three students that were recognized, and just being recognized at the state, that's an actual title of an award, recognition. There were three sixth graders. Sixth graders. Elementary Expo to this. Talk about a pipeline. I'd like to recognize Jau Hilly from Silver Sands, Kayla Hanania from River Springs, and Bradley Moon from River Springs also. These three sixth graders got recognized. Also in middle school, we had two middle schoolers receive a third-place award at state. In Environmental Engineering, Kasia Patel. She's a seventh grader at Hinson Middle School. Last year, she won fourth. This year, she won third. I can't wait for next year. So, also, third place in engineering was Kayden Hanania from River Springs. He's an eighth grader, so I'm looking forward to him moving up to high school. He's got amazing ideas. They all have amazing ideas. So also, we, the state gives special awards, as does Temoca Regional, the, you know, the money, or sometimes certificates in recognition. I wanted to mention Kayden Hanania, Kasia Patel, well, let me be specific. Kayden Hanania, he won a certificate from the US Navy. Kasia Patel from Hinson Middle School won acknowledgement from the US Metric Association, metric. Sylvie Nazarian from Orman Middle received, uh, maybe, was, I think it was some money, money, from the Florida Association of Science Supervisors. And Annabelle Dupree from Creekside Middle received a certificate and a patch, I believe, from NASA's Kennedy Space Center. So she won something from Kennedy Space Center. And that's the middle school state recognition. Now to high school. Also with recognition at the high school. Now, the senior division high school is very competitive. The, three years ago, the top student in the world came from Florida, to just give you some perspective. Wasn't our district, unfortunately, but that'll come soon. Trust me. We're working on it. In microbiology, the team project of Abigail Aldridge and Amanda King from Burnside Tech won recognition, so. Honorable mention was given to Lily Downs in the category of engineering. She's from Deltona High School. She's a ninth grader this year. She won first place in engineering in middle school last year, so she is now making a name for herself in high school. Also honorable mention in environmental engineering, the team project of Dixhanta Chara and Jordan Platt from Spruce Creek High School. And in plant sciences, from Spruce Creek High School, honorable mention for, for Jaron Agdassi. One of our three seniors about to graduate, by the way, in this group. And then in fourth place, we did have three projects win fourth place in state this year. In the biomedical and health sciences, there was a team project by Insha Majid and Milan Van from Spruce Creek High School. So, also in biomedical and health sciences was Brooklyn Bernstein from New Smyrna Beach High School. And last but not least, the other, last fourth place winner was in earth environmental sciences from Sasubel Aldeeb from Spruce Creek High School. And I want to conclude with, in Temoca Regional, we have, we affiliate with the, the International Science Engineering Fair directly. There's one pathway, and that is through state. It's really hard to be a grand champion at state, as you may, and that's one way to go to international. We have the direct affiliation from Temoca Regional, so there's one coveted spot they are all competing for. That has upped the game. They're all getting better and better. I wish you, visit the Temoca Regional Facebook page. If you lurk on there or join, but look, and they're all signed to spotlights. You can read about all their research and a little bit about them. We post them, we, we highlight them. Anyway, the team project of Abigail Aldridge and Amanda King, they're going to international this year on behalf of the Temoca Regional. They're representing us in May.
At this time, would you like to take pictures with all 20, or?
Could we do a middle school first?
Middle school and high school.
Okay, so all of you who are called for middle school, please come forward. Okay, so all of you who are called for middle school, please come forward.
Yes. All right, okay. Listen. You're missing two? Okay. For element, for middle?
For middle.
I could do that.
Good job. Good job.
Look at these good-looking principals.
I work at the.
She says you guys are slipping in well.
Are we missing anybody?
Three, two, one.
Nice. Here, you can move in the center.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know their names.
Good job.
Good job.
Look at these good-looking principals.
I work at the.
I need some more gentle representation.
Yeah, there's.
Can we get some of you all, can we get some younger ones in this section?
Yes.
Yes.
How about these principals?
She said you guys are slipping in well.
Are we missing anybody?
Three, two, one.
Nice.
Here, you can move in the center.
Congratulations.
Do you want to go this way?
Okay.
Our high school.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know their names.
Good job.
Ask for money. She just tells you that you're giving money. It's not a question. She puts together things that are unbelievable, and this is so well deserved. I'm so glad you're getting this award, and I'm honored to call you a friend.[14.84][16.28](APPLAUSE)
Okay. All right, we are moving on. Are there any public input cards for the consent agenda? Nothing for consent agenda, okay. We're moving on then to the consent agenda for this evening. Dr. Bogman, are there any items requiring removal on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I have no items.
Board members, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to remove for further discussion or to vote on as a standalone? Okay, I just have one that I'd like to make a comment on. Earlier today during our workshop, we had the Deland Police Athletic League here to do a presentation on all of the wonderful things they do here on the west Volusia, on the west side in Volusia County, for all of our students. All of the activities that they hold as soon as kids get out of school over the weekends during summer. And so tonight, one of the items on the consent agenda is item 15.03, which is allowing us to convey over to them a piece of property that has been surplus since 2011, and they have been using it since that time exclusively. And we've surplus, I mean, they've been using it prior to that, but we surplused it at that point in time, and it sits right in the community where all the children are coming from. And so, as I said earlier today, I support us continuing our partnership with them for the positive difference that they make for students. So at this time, do I have someone that would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Do we have a second?
Second.
That was you, Mrs. Brosmer. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented this evening, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Yes. So I think somebody needs to let the Police Athletic League know that we are moving forward with the property for them. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to take a short break, and then we will return. We will return at 6:10, and we will move into public participation. So if you need to get a card filled out, please see the ladies over on the side. I'll see everyone back at 6:10. Welcome back. At this time, we are moving on to item 16.01, public participation on any general education item. I currently have seven yellow cards. Are there any additional cards? And at this time, the collection for cards is closed. We're going to go ahead and take all seven speakers. I'm going to announce the first and second speaker so that the second speaker will be ready when to come forward as the first speaker finishes. You're given three minutes each. I ask that during this time, audience, please have your cellphones silenced, and there is no talking while people are speaking. If you agree with someone, you can put a thumbs up or jazz hands. If you disagree, you can put a thumbs down, but we're going to respect each speaker's time. The first speaker this evening is Elizabeth Albert, speaking on behalf of Rob Sabatino. The second speaker is Karen Weinreich. Welcome.
I don't know what's happened here. Crazy. All right. Good evening. I stand before you today with a heavy heart, a troubled mind, and a spirit ignited by the blatant mismanagement that has plagued our beloved Volusia County schools. We are here to address a crisis, a reoccurring nightmare that threatens the very foundation of our children's education. Just last year, we were informed of the impending displacement of 284 dedicated teachers. We were told that this drastic measure was necessary to rectify the funding gap created by the imprudent use of short-term pandemic relief funds for reoccurring positions. These funds intended for tutoring and support were instead handed out like Santa Claus was handing out presents, according to Board Member Haynes. This irresponsible action has directly led to the instability and uncertainty our teachers and students now face. And now, a year later, we find ourselves facing yet another financial abyss, a staggering $25 million budget shortfall. How can we, in good conscience, allow this pattern of fiscal irresponsibility to persist? How long will we sacrifice the quality of education for shortsighted financial decisions? It's not just about the overall deficit. We are told that the Volusia District is already the second lowest staffed when compared to eight other Florida school districts. Yet while instructional staff dwindles and teachers are displaced, there are serious concerns that the number of district-level administrators has only increased, further burdening the budget. This misallocation of resources is a slap in the face to our educators and a disservice to our students. To make matters worse, basic transparency is lacking. A clear, up-to-date organizational chart of the district's administration is nowhere to be found on the school district's website. How can we, as stakeholders, possibly understand the decision-making structure when the district refuses to provide even this fundamental piece of information? This lack of transparency breeds distrust and hinders any meaningful dialogue and solutions. Our teachers are not mere numbers on a spreadsheet. They are the lifeblood of our schools, the mentors of our children, and the pillars of our community. Displacing them, shuffling them between schools and subjects, disrupts the continuity of education and erodes the morale of our educators. We are told to be fiscally prudent, but where is the prudence in creating a system where funding is a constant crisis? Where is the prudence in jeopardizing our children's future? Where is the prudence in prioritizing administrative bloat over classroom support? I urge you, members of the board, to take immediate and decisive action. We demand transparency, accountability, and a long-term financial plan that prioritizes the needs of our students and teachers. We demand a lean, efficient administration that supports schools rather than siphoning resources. Stopgap measures and empty promises are no longer acceptable. We are tired of the cuts, the deficits, and the excuses. We are here to fight for our schools, for our teachers, and most importantly, for our children. We will not stand by and watch as their future is compromised by fiscal or financial mismanagement and administrative excess. The time for action is now. Our children deserve better. Our teachers deserve better. Our community deserves better. Thank you, Robert Sabatino.
Thank you. Following Karen Weinreich, it'll be Mariana Blanco. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Karen Weinreich. I teach fourth grade at Spruce Creek Elementary School, and I've been teaching there since 2010. I'm here because, like you and all who are listening online, I want our schools to be the best they can be for our students. I'm here to tell you to talk about the cuts that have made at schools this past week. I understand these are very uncertain times financially. I also understand that our enrollment is down about 1,000 students, and that leads to difficult choices. I believe, as I hope everyone here does as well, that every decision made in Volusia County schools should focus first on the students. That is, after all, while we are here, focusing on the students should frame every single cut that is made. So I'd like to ask you, what do you think the most important thing is a student needs? I'd say a quality teacher with a reasonable class size for every subject with a wide range of classes so that every student is challenged, and, as your strategic plan says, making sure all students will engage in high levels of learning every day. I've heard about devastating cuts at all levels in the schools that will result in class sizes, larger class sizes, cuts to advanced programs like AP and ACE, doubled-up special area classes, severe cuts to guidance counselors in elementary schools. All of these cuts directly affect our students. These cuts do not support the first three guardrails of our strategic plan. They do not help recruit, support, develop, and retain high-quality staff. They certainly do not provide conditions that enhance student learning. Without looking at cuts at the county level, they definitely do not improve operational efficiency and maximize resources to support student learning. and maximize resources to support student learning. So how do we go about minimizing the impact to our students and fulfilling our strategic plan? Before cutting at the school level, every single district position must be looked at to see if it's essential to students. How many district-level personnel are there? How many assistant superintendents do we have? Wouldn't these professional educators have a greater impact working directly with students? There are many TOAs at the district level, many of whom I know who are phenomenal teachers. They do work that supports teachers. However, what is the best place for them to directly impact students? In a county office or in a school, which then reduces class sizes and brings our best teachers back to students? Personally, I'd rather have a smaller class size with less district support than large class sizes that are above the limit. Yes, I know we now use the school average, but when you're in a school like mine with at least six self-contained ESE classes, that school average is misleading and ends up above the limit in many classes. Please remember how disruptive the 10-day count fixes are to the students. I have a second suggestion, and this is my favorite. Let's eliminate all district-mandated testing for the 2025-26 school year. This would take the testing burden off our students and free up so much more time to teach. You wouldn't need so many people in the curriculum offices creating tests. Again, this would be what's best for our students. Ask any student who's sat through VBAs or DIAs, and they will all agree. It will enhance student learning, and there will be much more time to teach. It will attract and retain high-quality teachers, and it will maximize resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weinreich. Mariana Blanco, followed by Yvette Liscano. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Mariana Bianco, and I have been a mathematics teacher at Volusia Virtual for over a decade. Today, I am here to address a pressing issue that has deeply affected our school community. This week, Volusia Virtual lost 12 positions, a change that will significantly impact the quality of service we provide to our students. Volusia Virtual serves a diverse group of students, including full-time virtual students, part-time virtual students, home education students, and special program students. As a teacher in the Special Programs Department, I work with students in various settings such as the credit retrieval labs, graduation academy labs, EBD classrooms, ASD classrooms, off-campus instruction, home instruction, hospital homebound, and HBS students. This school year alone, I teach 11 math courses. Nearly 400 students have been in place in my roster, with many taking multiple math courses, resulting in approximately 600 enrollments. Despite these challenges, my passing rate currently stands at 74%, enabling many students to earn mathematic credit required for graduation. Volusia Virtual plays a crucial role in improving graduation rate for Volusia County Schools. However, without sufficient teachers, we will struggle to support our students effectively. This situation may force students to seek other virtual providers, ultimately diverting funds away from our district. Additionally, teachers will be tasked with more work and responsibilities, making it difficult for them to provide the necessary individual attention to their students. To retain our students and provide them with quality education, it is imperative that we maintain a robust teaching staff at Volusia Virtual. Without dedicated teachers, students will inevitably choose other options outside of Volusia County. Thank you for your attention in this matter. I urge you, the school board members, the superintendent, to consider the impact of this position losses and take action to ensure that Volusia Virtual can continue to provide exceptional education to all of students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yvette Liscano, followed by Elizabeth Albert.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Liscano, and I've had the privilege of being an educator for over 30 years, with 18 of those years dedicated to Volusia County Schools, and the last decade at Volusia Online Learning. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern over the significant cuts to our instructional staff and the profound impact these decisions are having on our students and our schools. In just the past three years, Volusia Virtual Solutions, also known as Volusia Online Learning, has lost over 50 teachers from its team. This alarming trend is not just a statistic. It represents classrooms without consistent guidance, students without mentors, and colleagues stretched beyond their limits. Education is not a business, yet it feels as though Volusia County Schools is attempting to run it like one. How does this serve the students who depend on us for their learning and their growth? This year, the remaining teachers are shouldering increased workloads, including multiple preps and teaching across multiple platforms. We're already stretched thin, balancing the demands of diverse subject areas and digital tools, all whilst striving to provide the high-quality education our students deserve. And now, with continued cuts to instructional staff, the situation threatens to worsen. Next year, teachers may be forced to teach multiple subjects, an expectation that undermines the very foundation of specialized and effective education. I ask you, how does this serve our students? How does this ensure that each child receives the focused, individualized attention that they need to thrive? The answer is simple. It doesn't. Instead, it compromises the quality of education we can provide and risks burning out the very individuals who've dedicated their lives to this profession. I urge you to reconsider these cuts and to prioritize the needs of our students and teachers. Invest in us, so we can invest in them. Our students deserve a future shaped by educators who are supported, valued, and equipped to succeed, not by those pushed to the brink by impossible expectations. Cuts to Volusia Virtual Solutions does not just impact our full-time students, but also special populations such as EBD students and all other high schools across the district as we partner with them to provide necessary courses needed for graduation. If Volusia Virtual cannot accommodate serving our partner schools, students will be forced to turn to outside virtual programs, such as FLVS, which will further remove funds from our county. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Elizabeth Albert, speaking for herself, followed by Dorothy Featherston.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Balgobin, members of the audience. It's been a long but informative day. And although I am no longer working in the classroom, I have worked for VCS for 22 years, and I am invested in the success of the students, the employees, and the district. I believe that everyone in this room tonight wants Volusia County Schools to be the premier public school district in central Florida. Everyone in the community benefits from strong and high-achieving schools. Parents and educators have the same goal, which is our children. We want our children to thrive and to be productive citizens. However, I'm concerned that our continued response to the ebb and flow from Tallahassee is to make cuts where the students need the most support: the classroom. Cutting instructional allocations results in larger class sizes, cuts to programs, and negative impacts to the learning environment. It was stated earlier today, if parents enroll their children in our public schools, they'll stay, and I agree with that. If we know this is to be true, why are we not protecting and prioritizing the needs of our schools and our classrooms? By funding instructional positions and putting financial resources towards maintaining low class sizes across all K-12 classes, we can create the teaching and learning environments that set students up for continued success. We also know the value of a high school diploma and pride ourselves on increased graduation rates. But not all students take the traditional path to earn their diploma. VCS depends greatly on the team at Volusia Online Learning to provide an alternative pathway for our students to achieve this goal. Our seniors graduate on time due to the work of the teachers at VOL, yet cuts have been made to VOL. If we know that Volusia Online Learning meets this critical need, why are we cutting teaching positions from this important school? Legislators are still working on the financial budget. I know that we cannot put our trust in them, but I strongly encourage you to understand the value of putting your trust in the teachers and the staff of this district. Let's make it a priority to invest where it counts the most. Invest in the teachers and staff who do the work of improving student outcomes and moving this district closer to that A that we so deeply want. Put back the instructional allocations to create optimal teaching and learning environments so that we can become the most desired district for teaching, working, and learning in central Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Featherston, followed by Michelle Dibler.
Thank you. My name is Dorothy Featherston, and I am proud to serve as an art teacher. Can't you tell? At South Daytona Elementary. Tonight, I'm not here to speak on my own behalf, but for a fellow art teacher, someone that I deeply care about, who I believe has been treated with a troubling lack of professionalism and compassion. My friend began teaching at Holly Hill Elementary this school year. Like many of us, we're new. She reached out for support. I did often help her as best as I could. Unfortunately, instead of mentorship and guidance from her administration, she was met with silence. Her requests for help, especially when dealing with serious classroom disruptions, even fights, were met with increasing frustration from her administration. She tried to stay positive. She greeted her principal daily with a friendly hello. She's Spanish. I'm Colombian. Good morning. But those greetings were ignored repeatedly. When her evaluation reflected concerns about classroom management, she asked for more support to improve. She was given none. Every term, it became increasingly clear that she was not being set up for success. Even worse, that she was not welcome. Then last week, things escalated. A student hit her, a student in her class intentionally threw a tennis ball at her face. She was injured, and she's still in pain. She returned to work just a couple of days later only to be told she would not be reappointed for the next school year. That decision, while disappointing, is not the heart of why I'm speaking today. What concerns me most is what I think should concern all of us, is that the principal never once asked if she was okay. No expression of concern, not one word of acknowledging her pain or injury. In Volusia County, I know we expect more from our leaders. I know this because I've seen it firsthand. When someone at my school was hurt, our principal's the first to be the one to check in. She sets a tone of care and respect. And because of that, we feel valued, not just as educators, but as people. No teacher should be hurt and then ignored. No teacher should feel unseen, especially when they're asking for help. I sincerely hope this experience is not repeated with another teacher. It's not just about one incident. It's the message that it sends to everybody. Thank you.
Michelle Dibler. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Dibler, and I am a teacher here at Volusia County Schools and a proud parent of a Volusia County student. I am here to speak on behalf of a colleague that was not able to join us tonight. My name is Melissa Woodward, and I proudly served VCS for 35 years in both the capacity of a classroom teacher and a school counselor. I was recently saddened to hear about the district allocations to reduce all elementary schools to only one school counselor. The elementary years are a time when students begin to develop the foundation of their academic self-concept, feelings of competence and confidence as learners. Elementary school counselors implement a school counseling program to support students through this important developmental period. Elementary school counselors are educators uniquely trained in child development, learning strategies, and social-emotional development. Elementary school counselors help provide the foundation to academic career and social-emotional success. This role extends beyond that of a single school counselor. When students lack a strong foundational knowledge, they may encounter several significant challenges during their middle school and high school years. These challenges can manifest in various aspects of their academic and personal development, such as academic struggles, increased stress and anxiety, poor study habits, social challenges, and even limited career options. The American School Counselor Association recommends a student-to-school counselor ratio of 250 to 1 to ensure effective implementation of a comprehensive school counseling program. A lower student-to-counselor ratio is associated with positive student outcomes, including improved academic performance, higher attendance rate, and reduced disciplinary issues, which are all district initiatives. In conclusion, I serve as elementary school counselor at a school with two counselors this year and a total of 753 students. However, next year, I will not be present, and my colleague will be the sole counselor dedicated to assisting these 753 students, as well as their parents and teachers. And tomorrow, after 35 years of dedicated service with VCS, I will attend a job transfer fair in hopes of finding a new position. However, my primary concern is the two years I have spent building rapport and developing relationships with students who rely on daily contact with someone they can trust. Next year, these students are likely to feel abandoned and confused. When essential positions that support the well-being of children are eliminated without careful consideration of the impact on our students, we convey the message that they are not the primary reason we come to work each day. They are not a priority. I believe there are more effective financial solutions available for the district than reducing elementary school counseling to just one counselor per school, and this will affect seven elementary schools, not just mine. And I want you to know that my child will be one affected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we are now moving on to item 17.01, Request to Advertise Proposed School Board Policy 528, Policy on Religious Expression in Public Schools. We have one comment card for this item. So we'll start with a comment card. Mrs. Albert.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Balgobin, members of the audience. So, Policy 528, the Policy on Religious Expression in Public Schools. I just have to ask why. Why are we doing this? It doesn't seem to be that there is some crisis, so I'm kind of wondering why we're doing this right now. When I go into the document that was provided as the attachment, if we do have to create this policy, why would we even go any further than the first sentence? Why do we need all of this additional down below that? When we look at the Student Expression of Religious Viewpoints, Sections 2 and 3 reference student homework, classroom assignments. Would these assignments be aligned with the Florida standards? I would hope so, and I would like to know if there is any criteria when we unpack those standards that would relate to the conversation around an individual's religious belief. Going further down in the document, in the section titled "Students Engaging in Religious Activities and Expression at School", in both of these two items, "during school" is also included. So I would like to have an explanation of when during academic hours we would be allowing for engaging in religious activities. On the page 2, under the section "Limited Public Forum Required for Student Speakers", in Item 1 and Item 5, there is language that says "on an otherwise permissible subject". So since I have some time, I'll read number 1. So, "We must provide the forum in a manner that does not discriminate against a student's voluntary expression of a religious viewpoint on an otherwise permissible subject." So what other subjects would we be referencing here? Number 5, "Student Expression of a Religious Viewpoint on an Otherwise Permissible Subject May Not Be Excluded from the Limited Public Forum." What does all of this mean? Again, I'm going to go back to the way I started. Why are we doing this? What need does this fill? Was there something that happened? It doesn't make sense. There's a reason why there's a separation of church and state. And standing in front of you as a fundamentalist Christian, I will say this to you. If my students, if my children, rather, were still in the public school system, and they came home and told me that there were some interactions or some dialogue that occurred in their class related to religious beliefs, I would have a real big problem with that. Because what my husband and I decide to teach our children is our right, and I don't send them to school to learn about... I send them to school to learn the Florida standards. I need to know why we're doing this and what has occurred. Because when you open this door, you open it to everything. Thank you.
So now, there's no other cards, right? Okay. So, Dr. Evans, could you please explain why this policy is up for advertisement?
Madam Chair, Superintendent, board members, this policy that we are proposing, Request to Advertise Proposed School Board Policy 528, Policy on Religious Expression in Public Schools, this is required by Florida law. If you look at Florida Statute 1002.202... If you look at Florida Statute 1002.2066, Florida law requires the counties, every county in Florida, to adopt and implement, adopt and implement, a policy regarding a limited public forum and voluntary expression of religious viewpoints by students and school personnel in public schools. This is required by law. And we received an email from the Department of Education saying that Volusia County was one of 13 counties that had not implemented the policy, and we need to do it immediately.
What is the number?
If you look in the background that's provided, but I will articulate it again, it's 1002.206, subsection 6. You're welcome.
So, Dr. Balgobin, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. I recommend granting the authority to advertise proposed school board policy 528, which is a policy on religious expression in public schools.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do I have someone that will make a motion to approve for the advertisement of proposed school board policy 528?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Goodrich. Any discussion? Mrs. Brosmer?
I think I have some of the same questions that Mrs. Albert raised. In particular, I understand the why, if there's something we're supposed to do with regard to Florida statute, but this language goes beyond that language, and I'm wondering if it goes farther than we need to. My particular questions had to do with definitions. There are a whole lot of things that are defining religions these days that may or may not fall into what we would typically consider a religion, and I would have no idea how to define what fits that category. And the question of the definition of permissible subject matter also came to mind. So, I just wondered if there's some way to limit the language and come up with definitions for some of this, restrictions for some of it.
Thank you, Ms. Brosmer, but this policy was developed by the Department of Education as the model policy, and as written, this is how we are supposed to adopt it.
So, they wrote it?
They wrote it and told every district to implement it.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Cologne?
I have nothing.
Okay, so just to clarify, in the event someone is listening and/or reviewing this later, there was a law written requiring a policy on religious expression in public schools. We received an email that we are one of 13 districts that had not yet complied, and that we were to comply. The actual policy itself was written and given out to the districts to adopt. So, what we're looking at here today for school board policy 528 was not created in-house. It was created at the state level, and we are required by law to adopt this policy. So, we have a motion for Ms. Thompson, and a second for Ms. Goodrich, and so if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. It passes 4 to 1. We are now moving along to item 18.01. Ms. Johnson, are there any other cards? Okay, hearing none. Then we are now moving on to items 19.01. Do I have any board members that have something that they would like to bring forward for Mr. Cologne?
Local control matters. And while we have a constitutional duty to do what's best for our students, regardless of the subject, the subject didn't really matter. It's really upsetting to me that something would be dissent-delivered and knowing they don't have the constitutional authority, but we do, and said, "Here, you have to do this." Something's not right with that, and that's all I have to say. It's not even on the content or the subject. It's just, it's not the way, it's not the way it should be done, and the why, certainly, I don't think anybody here could really speak to the why of why this was. And so, that's very upsetting, just as we've spent the day talking about some really difficult subjects that while there is no standard, because I said, you know, what does the state call a standard for a size of a school? Well, there is none. Every district is different. Again, we are the ones who are forced to face our communities and saying, "Your school not making it, we're closing it." We have to face our neighbors. We have to face, we have to make these tough decisions. These are things that we have to do. It's not as easy as saying, "We're just going to take something off the menu," and that's just it, because it's not cost-effective. You know, there are lives, there are emotions, and so I'm just venting right now, to be honest with you, because I don't think it's going to make a difference. It's just very challenging, because as much as we want to do what's right for kids, there's so many other constraints around us that just make this very difficult. And so, Dr. B and team, thank you for helping us try to make this as best as possible. I said this earlier in the meeting. I know there's a lot of talk on the budget. Right now, we are in the, what I would call the drafting phase. And so, I appreciate everyone who came to speak about the budget and the cuts, and sometimes there are things we know about, there are things we don't know about, et cetera. But this is why we are in the process. Today was the first day we started that conversation as a board, and so, you know, there are tough decisions to be made, and I think our staff is really, really working hard to set us up for success as they have year after year. So, thank you.
Mr. Cologne, Mr. Brosmer?
My comments have to do with the budget, and I do understand that it is a tough subject, I will say. In all of my adult years, I don't believe I've ever heard a single year where school districts didn't think that they were not getting enough money. And so, nothing I've heard today was unusual in that context. We have, I have a lot of notes, so just bear with me here. This district has many great principals, teachers, programs, and students. We see it all the time. We see it at every meeting, in all of the acknowledgements. And the district does a great job of letting everyone know about our achievements, and nothing that I have to say is intended to distract from any of that. It's good for us to be cheerleaders, but we also need to be clear-eyed about the issues that we are obligated as a board and as a district to acknowledge, confront, and address, and that directly affect the quality of the product that we want to promote to our community stakeholders. I've struggled with this budget information as it's been presented, and I'll be the first to admit that budgets are generally not my thing, but the fundamental concepts are not hard to grasp. So, today, most of what we heard was the yin, and I guess I'm going to be the yang of this discussion. Because based on what my experts, my NCOs, in my conversations in my district, based on what they are telling me, here are some of my concerns. We have fewer students now than we had 10 years ago, but our budget is twice the size. So, some obvious questions are why? Is the budget that big? Why are we losing students, and what role does school choice have to play in that? But here are some considerations. We are not sufficiently competitive in either classroom conditions or academic offerings. In classroom conditions, the feedback I get from teachers and principals is consistently that disruptive students, both gen ed and ESE, are the primary impediment to teaching time, that in turn lowers proficiency rates, because teachers can't spend their time teaching when they have to spend their time trying to control the class. This is a leading reason why parents withdraw their kids from our schools. Larger schools can work, but they require disciplined classrooms. After years of restorative justice, we know it doesn't work, but we aren't doing what we could do to enforce our own conduct codes and to implement strategies that have been successful in other districts in calming their schools. In academic offerings, according to the FDOE website, many of the other districts in the state have a lot of magnet schools in both math and science and in art. We have two. They are both IB. Our first obligation is to our students, which means principals, teachers, bus drivers, food service. So, those should not be the first place we look for cuts. We always go to the front line first, but we need instead to look internally, to look at the positions in the district that have no student contact. That would allow us to reset our priorities, and this is why I may sound like a broken record, but it's why I have recommended in the past, in past meetings, that we try going to a zero-based budget, because it allows us to build from the bottom up, instead of just building on what we already have. And I'll use our elementary schools as an example. Studies for the last 25 years have consistently shown that the smaller schools, 300 to 500 students, are the best economy of scale. Our break-even point is 750. If that's been set by the state, I guess we're stuck with that. And so, as a result, we're looking at closing a few of our smaller schools. We have only 10 elementary schools in the entire county that can accommodate 750 students. So, even if we tried rezoning, we couldn't reach that number in the schools that we already have. We also have schools that are overcapacity, and I still believe, despite some of the earlier conversation here, I still believe that if we averaged the district instead of looking school by school, we could make up for some of the schools that are not meeting that break-even point. Volusia County closed a number of schools between 2008 and 2010, and a lot of the schools that were closed became charter schools. So, we have some background in how this plays out when we do it. So, my concern is that from both a fiscal and performance point of view, we need to look at our internal operations first before we start to cut on our front lines and realign our priorities that way. I think a better solution than cutting is to make us more competitive. So, my example is OBE. Orman Beach Elementary is on the chopping block. It is a Title I school, and their performance rates, their proficiency rates are the highest in my district. They routinely exceed more than 60%. The school's been cannibalized over the last number of years. Students have been sent to Pine Trails, and they have no bus service, they have no AP. So presumably, their break-even point isn't the same as some of the larger schools would be. And it's safe to say that Orman Beach parents are not going to take kindly to the loss of yet another of our elementary schools, having lost Osceola so recently. And they would be some of the most likely parents to go to the conversion option that appears that it's going to pass this year. So, instead of sitting back and thinking that we just had to watch it go away, I have spoken with the principal, and with intentionality, we decided to attract more students. I happened to overhear Mrs. Hay, the principal, say that she has long wanted to open an arts magnet school. So, when district staff told me that OBE was on the chopping block, I went to her and I said, "Now is the time." So, with her work and whatever she needs from me, that is our plan for OBE. It will be an arts magnet school. It will take two to three years to do. She's going to do the majority of the work and then make application to the district in whatever the appropriate process is. I've left it to her to do that. And it's a two- to three-year project, so hopefully, it will materialize and will be the first of its kind in the county. I watched Palm Beach County merge two failing high schools into Dreyfus School of the Arts 20 years ago. It immediately became an A school with a long waiting list. It has remained that way for the last 20 years, and it spawned Bach Middle School of the Arts, which now feeds into Dreyfus School of the Arts. So, it can be done, it can be successful, it can be excellent, and I think our district is ripe for this kind of a project. But I have concerns about, on another subject, on ESE. I'm not sure how we advance the needs and interests of our ESE kids by cutting the IEP facilitators from 20 to 5 and sending them to multiple schools. I don't know how they would have the opportunity to get to know their principals and to get to know the parents. And I'm not sure how this decision was made. I hadn't heard any discussion about it, so I don't know if there was a committee of stakeholders and who might have been on it. But those are consistently the hardest to staff. So, my concern is that we look for ways to increase their services rather than to restructure them in a way that appears to be a cut. My point in all of this is that while a lot of things are out of our control, there are things we can do that are in our control. And that means that we need to take aggressive action to improve classroom conditions, which includes, as my principals have often requested, more in-school suspension. Actively pursue program enhancements rather than program cuts. Stop gutting gifted programs and hiring unqualified teachers for those classes simply because we think those students are smart enough already. They are among the highest number of dropouts and among the highest suicide rates because they are routinely overlooked. And I learned that from a teacher who is certified as teaching gifted students. We need to stop creating a false floor for grades. That tells students they don't have to work hard to pass, and we fail to teach them accountability. We need to stop social promotion, allowing students to pass to the next grade if they're not ready, because that puts a burden on the teacher who inherits them, and they may fall further behind. We need to stop catch-and-release of disruptive students and stop canceling referrals. Catch-and-release is sending them to the principal's office and they immediately get sent back. And we need to determine where or whether we need future schools with facilities and half-cent sales tax updates that we have already requested. We in particular need to trim our non-student contact overhead. It's very easy for us to fall back to the stock answers of, "We're already doing that, we need more time, we need more money." But we have solutions, and if we stay on the road we're on, we'll slide into our fifth year of declining enrollment, and we may have to surplus land that we had been holding on to for future schools. So, from my own standpoint, I can't support a budget that doesn't realign our priorities in ways that include some of these methods. Parents don't need to be told that they could homeschool or that they have school choice. They're voting with their feet already. We have been- We have been hemorrhaging teachers and students. And if we improve our product, then we won't have any trouble increasing our enrollment in next year and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cologne?
Ms. Rosmar, I appreciate your input. Clearly, you thought through it very well. Unfortunately, that's not the way this works. There are five of us. We are bored. What Ruben wants, I have to speak to this young lady here who we voted on a contract, so clearly we trust her. Where teachers go, what programs are added, what programs are taken away, that's not in our wheelhouse. We have zero control over that. Zero. Now, we can work with the superintendent and say, we wish to have this program at this school and she will work with staff. But individually, we we our powers as a board. So while I appreciate your sentiments and trust me, it's one of the most heartbreaking things you learn very quickly, that we work together as a team. To propose something with a principal, that's inappropriate. I can't call a principal and say, I need you to turn the lights on. I have to ask Dr. Balgabin to ask the principal to turn the lights on. I have to say, hey, Dr. Balgabin, can we turn? Because that is operational. And that's the hard part of this is we either trust our superintendent or we don't. And I think the board sent the message that we do. And so we have to work together as a board and and we always have. You could say, hey, I think, like I said today, I think the arts are important. And I've shared that with the superintendent. And as a result, I've had meetings with the arts folks. And, you know, that's the way. And so if the superintendent says, Ruben, we can't do that right now, that's it. It's operational. And so we are not in the operational realm. To say that the district hasn't looked at its positions, that's saying that she does not do a good job. Okay? And that's not the case. I don't believe that to be the case. And so I'm not saying that we sit idle because we don't. Trust me. Dr. B and I talk all the time and I tell her this is hey, this is not working out. And sometimes she says, well, Ruben, you need to look at it this way. And sometimes she says, I agree. Let me see what I can do. We are one as a board. And so I agree with you and 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 part of what sits with me is I I know where your heart is. But when the Commissioner of Education walks into an F S B A meeting and what he has to offer to a group of school board members from across the state is you all should be participating with Step Up so you can get some of their money, that tells you where the state's priorities are. And I'm not going to get political because it is what it is. So we are fighting a losing battle. Public education is being slammed. You're absolutely right. There are tough decisions to make. We see Duval did it. They closed down how many schools? Over 30 schools. Hillsborough, okay? You know what? I'm not one to usually open my mouth. You know what schools we're talking about? And I want you guys to count. And again, I'm honestly, this is not coming from the district. I simply asked Chat G P T, how many of our schools have less than 650 students? That's all. So not official, didn't come from Dr. B, Patty, anybody. Coronado. Oh. Says 242. It was close. Stark. McGinnis, Orman Beach, Palm Terrace, Port Orange, R J Longstreet, Reed Patilla. Well, those are all yours. Terry T, Volusia Pines, Woodward.
Okay, Terry T has been corrected. So that was probably last.
Oh, this is Chat G P T. So just take it for what it's worth. I mean, there's arguably to do what is right would mean to affect this many communities. I'm not ready to do that. And Dr. B doesn't even look at me because I I say it to her all the time. I'm not ready to do that. I'm not as ready as y'all are. I'm I'm not. Because there are people, there are communities, there are. And I kind of side with what you said about maybe there are better schools because they're smaller. Who knows? They're just not efficient. And so you ask yourself, well, why aren't they efficient? Well, because they want them to be bigger schools. Well, that's the tough decision that we have to make. You notice how many of these schools are in District Five? And mind you, this is Chat G P T's list, not anything I got from the district. Zero. So I don't even have a dog in this fight in this dog, dog in this fight. But we have to work together and so and we have to work with the superintendent in order to accomplish these things. And while I appreciate you sharing your sentiments with us, it felt like you were saying we're not doing these things. And really, I've asked the superintendent, what are we doing with this? What are we doing with that? And I encourage you to because the reality is, I mean, unless we are ready to make some crazy, crazy, deep changes. Okay, I appreciate the folks that came and talked about, you know, how many teachers and how many counselors and all that are great. So then my question would be if we lost 1,000 students, what what teachers do we get rid of? Zero. Well, that doesn't add up. And so, you know, it it it's a tough conundrum to be in in a system that is working against us. It is. I mean, this is the elephant in the room in public education. Okay, when we're trying to, and 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 this is not a plug to Elizabeth Albert, but when we're trying to totally dissipate the the word of the people who fight for the profession systematically, nationally. I mean, this is hard. So I just want to make sure that folks who hear this don't think that what any of us says is the sentiment of the board because that's who we are. We are a board together. No one of us, nothing Ruben says individually, though someone may actually believe me. But nothing I say individually matters. It's the decisions we make in this room. And so your vote may be no on the budget and that's fair. That's why, trust me, I vote no for things all the time. Okay, but at the end of the day, if we approve that budget, that's the budget that we approved as a board. I encourage you to work with Dr. B. I encourage you to share these thoughts. It it just doesn't work that way. And I trust me, sometimes I wish I could say, hey, I want this or I want that. It just doesn't work that way. So I encourage you to, you know, what's the word I'd use? Bring it up. We either have a agree, we either agree or we don't. And if it's a board decision, then it's a board decision. Then Dr. B, quite frankly, wouldn't have a, oh, if it's operational, it's not even ours anyways. Where teachers go, what the classroom size is, that's not our role. We can provide direction, but that's not our role. And a lot of folks don't realize that. Thank you.
Thompson?
Thank you. And now I have questions. And so indulge me if you will. And if these are things that have to be emailed to us later, it's not life or death tonight. One, the increase that is being spent by the district has increased over the past 10 years. However, I know that there are some programs that have been passed on from state legislators that have caused us to go up along with things like inflation because everything costs more. So that's one. Two, last year I we made cuts and we made some district cuts. So how much did we cut financially from the district positions last year? And three, our internal operations at the district. Can we compare those to some districts that are of a similar size? Just to see, because I know that was one thing when I got on the board that I didn't realize how many people it takes to run different departments. And different departments need more people than others. And I I get that. And that's a way more complex matrix than I have written down here. And then to speak on the gifted students, and I haven't met every single gifted teacher. I've met quite a few though, because I have some gifted programs and part time gifted programs. And I'll say the ones that I've met have been phenomenal. My my, both my kids are in there and they love their teacher. And I will say there are behaviors that come into gifted and it does fall under E S E. And a lot of times those kids do fall in both, but they manage to make it work. And I've never felt, and and my daughter is too smart for her own good. But she's I've never felt that she is being left alone to her own devices. Instead, she's been given more and more opportunities to grow. So if that is something where we do have an issue with our gifted teachers not being up to par, if we could look at that over the summer and see where we're missing because, I mean, we have a lot of those kids. And the I did have the question here, what schools are closing? Because I hadn't heard of any of those. And you know, Coronado has my heart, so I just.
We haven't talked about any of this.
And those are the end of my questions. Thank you.
So I really don't know if you're asking me. I don't know where the narrative came from, what schools were going to be closing because I have not even discussed that with staff.
And for my discussion with staff?
My staff discussed that with you and shared with you the schools that will be closing?
That it was two to three years out.
Well, I'm not going to put anyone on the spot, but this is what I can assert and tell you that we have, I have not had that discussion with any staff members.
I would not have brought it up if it had not been said to me.
Take it away.
Okay, I will leave it at that. So for the records, I just want to make sure it's clear that I have not discussed that with any of you. As a matter of fact, when you and I talked as of yesterday, I said to you, this would probably have to be like a pre three pronged approach, if you recall. So I have not, going back to your your question, Ms. Thompson. Last year, we did have a cut. We did do cuts last year, resizing, I like to call it. I think it was about $2.3 million last year. This year so far, I think it's 1.2 or 1.3, John? Of of resizing.
And that's district specific?
Correct. I will look at about 30 something districts and look at the ones that were similar in size to ours. T and St. John's, which we are comparative. You will find that we are not on the top and we're not necessarily the the last either in the bottom. We are right like in the middle when it comes to. And again, when it comes to these positions, it goes based on legislation, what legislation requires, right? That's translated into policy and it's called the Accountability System. So you have to establish a structure to meet the needs of that Accountability System that that the state calls for. In addition to that, you look at the overall health of our schools. And when I say the overall health, we're talking about the academics, social, emotional needs of our schools. That's translated into our strategic plan into quantifiable goals. So you take your strategic plan along with the Accountability System by the state of Florida. And that's how you detail your your structure in place to support schools. Going back to the question in terms of how our district has restructured, every single position at the district level, with the exception of, I believe, of four or five, supports schools and supports children directly. You ask one other question.
Compared to other districts last year?
Okay, the the changes, right? Legislative changes.
Yes, thank you.
I have a whole list of all the different, just from a safety and security standpoint. Just from a safety and security standpoint, there are like 20, 23, 24 requirements that has to be in place. And I do have a copy for it if you would like. It's right here. Sorry, if you'll pass that along. You can pass it to everyone. This is the districts nearby. You can pass it to everyone. Mr. Cologne?
Give it back to you, Mr. Cologne.
Add that to the to the meeting record?
Yeah, and and I don't do one because I know there are some principals that are listening. And I did hear this brought up from my principal council because I do meet with the principals monthly from the principal council. They said there's a lot of conversation taking place that we're cutting, you know, closing schools. And 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 I said, well, I don't know where necessarily that's stemming from because I have not had that discussion with anyone from my staff to share with anyone at this point. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Goodrich?
I was also very confused. I did not know that Orman Beach Elementary was on the chopping block. And I've had numerous conversations about a gazillion ideas out there. And that has not been one of them. We've talked about schools in general. And we do function as a board and we do vote as a board. A lot of the things that were stated, some of those records have been asked for and given to all of us. And we've been able to look at those numbers. And so if there's actual examples and not just rhetoric about numbers, I would appreciate seeing those rather than just statements being made. When you speak from the dais, sometimes your words are taken as full fact. And without having the data behind it in front of you to support it, it makes it very difficult to operate as a board. I don't think I've ever sat on a board where there were seemingly board members working against working together. Everything's not going to be perfect. Everything's not going to be great. But to throw things out there to make a district look bad or be questioned in ways that the answer's actually already been given or to put information out that's simply untrue is just devastating to hear as another board member. And that's what I have to say.
Ms. Brosmar?
The notion that we function as a board is correct in one regard. But it's also completely misleading in another. We all bring our own talents, our own perspectives. And if we're just here to rubber stamp each other or to rubber stamp the superintendent or anybody else, then we're not doing our jobs. The the issues I raised came from, as I I said a couple of meetings back, I I trust my N C Os, I trust my people on the ground, my teachers and my principals in my district. And I have good interaction with them. And what I relayed came from them. So it's not a matter of second guessing how anybody's doing a job. It's a matter of pointing to things that we have the ability. There's there are so many things that are out of our control. And we can blame the state. We can blame the feds. We can blame whoever we want to. But the bottom line is there are some things that we can control. And and my reason for bringing these things forward is because everyone is reluctant to talk about them. It's the kind of thing that that is an undercurrent through the schools, but but nobody wants to discuss it here. And I I get the whole we work together thing, but that doesn't mean that we see everything the same. And if we can't each bring our perspectives forward because it sounds like a discouraging word, then we aren't doing our jobs either.
Ms. Goodrich?
It's curious to me that we had a great opportunity to speak about the budget this morning. And yet now is when this is all brought up. It makes it feel pretty intentional when we had plenty of opportunities to bring up a lot of these questions earlier today. Yes, we do all bring something to the table. But when you approach things in a way that isn't having a discussion, it's at the end when it's just statements. That's not working together. That's not operating as a team. That's not looking for solutions.
I don't need to do it your way.
I didn't say you had to do it my way. I'm allowed to share my opinion as well. So that's what's devastating is you could have brought it up this morning. We could have had great conversations about it, asked questions, got answers. But that wasn't done that way.
Dr. Balgabin, can Ms. Workman come forward, please?
Yeah, Stephanie Workman? Can you join us, please?
Can you join us, please?
Give me just, give me just a minute.
Okay.
Um, and then I, I'm going to ask you some questions that I have already asked you, but I want everyone to hear, okay?
Okay.
So we are five individuals, and we bring five different perspectives. We bring five different backgrounds, whether it's, um, our educational background, or, you know, just the way we were raised, or where we were raised. Even, even, you know, the types of families that we lived in. And I personally believe, and I've stated this for many years, even as a teacher, I'd much rather even as a classroom teacher, have two, three, four, five, 10 people to work together that bring their thoughts and share their ideas. Because I do believe when you put that many minds together, you can find the best solutions for students and/or find the best path versus one person doing it singly. So the way this is structured is that the five of us can share things, but we only can really share them here in this room. And that's one of the toughest things, I'll say, of being a school board member, is I can't call Ms. Thompson and just really even ask her a question on anything related to school, because we may have to vote on it at some time. So the only place we can talk and hear each other out is here in this room. And I do believe, just as we allow a lot of different times for public participation, I do believe this is our chance to talk. So I know some of the additional questions that have been asked. And what's really nice is, I have learned that I ask further questions. So I know there was a question asked comparing 2015 to where we are now on district staff. And I know, Ms. Workman, you answered it and you provided all of us with the answer. And then I called and asked you for some additional questions and some explanation. And you gave me a beautiful explanation, and it totally made sense when you said it. And so could you share with us why there is an increase? And, and the minute you said it, I knew why, okay? But it was just nice that you had the details and facts for why.
Absolutely. So in the data that was submitted, um, if you look at the district staff now versus 2015, there was a difference of four positions. And the reason we had those increases in those positions is what's happened in that 10-year time span. The first thing being Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. So that required us to build a safety and security department. So, so we had to put some administrative oversight there. We also had to, um, put in some additional structures when we decided to bring our custodial back onboard. When, when those positions were originally eliminated, that eliminated the entire support system at the district for those individuals. So just those two alone account for the majority of those additional positions.
Right. And so when I called Ms. Workman and asked that, and, and the truth is, what happened at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas was devastating. And I appreciate what legislators did, and, and they've just each year added to it, because it started out first, you need to do this, then you need to harden your campuses, and they've just continued on. And we in Volusia County have even taken a very proactive piece, you know, look at what's happened with vaping, to try to cut down on vaping. It's not just that they installed vape detectors, which took additional money and, and, you know, staff, but we've also got a whole vaping program if students are caught vaping. I don't think any of us here in this room, when you stop to think about, so why were some positions added at the district level, and let's talk safety and security. I personally, safety and security doesn't need to go anywhere. Unfort- unfortunately, we reached, we reached a point where it's a part of our everyday life in schools, but I don't think any of us in here would say, we need to make cuts to our safety and security department. Because what's happening there is, we're trying to keep every individual, whether it's a student, a para, a teacher, a schoolway cafe, an office specialist, you know, a coach, or, you know, the administrators, we're trying to keep everybody on campus safe. And when we talk about the custodial piece, I lived over here on the pendulum when the custodians were ours. You know, when I started, um, over 38 years ago, we had the best custodians. I mean, they were a part of our family at every school. I remember when the district came over here and they made the decision to remove all of them and outsource that. And I don't think anyone would say the outsourcing worked or worked well. I mean, I got teachers back here going, yep, it didn't work. And so we worked hard and asked, because that's not, we don't get to make that decision, but we asked to bring custodial services back to Volusia County and stop with outsourcing. Those of you that joined the board sometime after Mr. Cologne and I, we can tell you, every day, we got emails that were tickets, that were input by teachers and staff on our campuses, when we were outsourced, telling us all the issues that weren't being addressed. An entire dashboard was running. Any day, I could see every school in my district, and I got every email that was put in with a ticket. When we made the switch back to bringing back our custodians and then coming back as a team and a family, it did, it did, it was like, within a month, at tops two, I no longer was getting all these emails every day of tickets. And the ticket system was still up. I asked, did you shut the ticket system down? And they're like, no, the rooms are being cleaned. I'm not saying that you might have a sub one day and something's not, you know, sub custodian, something's not exactly the way you want it, but we brought them back. I don't want to cut the custodians. I don't ever want to go back to outsourcing that again, because all we had were problems. So we had to create some district positions, you know, to bring custodians back in. They have to have a leader over them, and somebody that does the plan and the schedule, and who's going to be where and all of that. So what I've learned in the time that I've been on the board, and I don't always agree with everything. And I'm probably the one person that kind of speaks up, but I always do it professionally and respectfully. I ask Dr. Balgman a lot of questions, or I ask her permission to ask others questions, so that I have the information. In no way at all, none, none of us sitting here are perfect, okay? We can all make a mistake, we can miss some information, but I believe in asking questions, and I believe in getting answers and taking time to process it. And I too ask people out on the front lines. I have teachers that contact me all the time to share stuff, or para professional, I even have bus drivers, you know, because I know some of, I know people in the positions. But I also know sometimes someone may see it through just their lens and not see the whole picture. So you have to learn to take the pieces of information you get, and you have to learn to sort through them. And when I see that there's an issue, it's because it's not just one person. One person may be having an issue, but that's not the thing for everybody. And each school is unique. You walk into any campus and you're going to be greeted by some, some may smile at you, some may grapple at you, I'll be honest with you. So, no, you could walk in and no one's there to even speak to you. It, it's no different, I told my brother this years ago. Believe it or not, the person at your front desk, at your doctor's office, makes or breaks, whether or not they like you, because it's how they're greeted when they come in, and how you treat them when they exit. And if that is not what needs to happen, you can be phenomenal, but that's not the impression you'll leave. So Ms. Brosmer, I appreciate all your questions. I took a lot of notes, um, this evening. But what I also know is, I can't do this job and work in this position in isolation. And I can't listen sometimes to just one person or three people. And I have to work with these individuals and the individuals there, and I have to listen and work with all of the individuals sitting in this room, because it's going to take all of us to ensure that every child gets the best education. Now, as far as, I, I don't know who told you what, but I will tell you, it's not a hidden secret that for the past two years, it's been said out loud in board meetings. We've talked about, um, some of the schools that have a lower enrollment. We've talked about, um, one school in particular, it's in Ms. Thompson's area. So I'm not speaking out of turn, you've heard me talk about it. They've brought it up and what the cost would be to repair, just start repairs on the building, not bring the building even to where it would need to be. And I have stated, this is what I've stated, okay? I cannot vote, and this was two years ago when the first number came up. I can't vote to put $21 million into a building that will continue to still need more money to just bring parts of it up to code that does not in any way allow us to put more students in that building. It's just like, just, it, it'd be like, you know, if you ever watched the, there was a show years ago, or a movie, something about the money pit, and somebody bought a house, and all they just kept doing was pouring money into that house. And so, yes, they wanted to raise their family in it, but even no matter how much money they poured into it, it's not like they could bring five families in to live into the house. They just kept pouring it. We have to be fiscally responsible. Yes, over the years, we've closed schools. We also closed Seville. And you know what Seville became? Seville didn't become a charter school. The community took it over and they turned it into a library space and an activity space for that community. And it is beautiful. And they hold events there, and they have books for kids and all of that. So we have to be intentional about what we're doing, why we're doing it. But as I said today in the budget meeting, some of our high schools could have a lot of additional programs, which would help those students on the career paths they want to do, or give them opportunities that they would not have in a lot of different areas if a portion of their budget was not being redirected into smaller schools. And what I have seen truly is, all schools are great, but it typically is five parents, you know, that do everything. Well, when you take a school and you put them together, and you have a lot more parents that can volunteer and assist and help and promote and support, those schools do even better because they have more support. Because if you're relying on five parents and their kids finish out that school, you lost them. And you got to hope you got another one coming in. So I have talked about this. So, but I'm not, you know, I have no direction to tell staff what we're going to do or what we're not going to do, because it'll be decided here in the boardroom, what we will or will not do, because it'll be brought forward, whatever plan Dr. Balgman and her staff comes up with will be brought to us, and we will vote on it. And whatever the vote is at the time, whether it's three to two, four to one, five to zero, you know, or flip it, that's, at that point, it becomes the decision of the board, and we each have to own the decision when we make that vote. So what I would encourage you to do is reach out and ask questions. I mean, that's how I find out the things that I need to know, is I ask a lot of questions. And sometimes they may get annoyed with me even for all the questions I ask, but I'm asking them so that I understand and I can make informed, an informed decision when it's time. Because I think that is our responsibility, is to make informed decisions, to read all the board docs, to ask questions. And I've been here over 38 years, and I already know a lot of the information, but I still ask the questions to make sure that even the path that I'm thinking this is, I verify that it's true, because I know longer every day work in one of those departments. When I worked in one of those departments, when I worked in federal programs and grants, I would have been happy, and I did at any given time, answer questions for board members and give them information that they needed to make informed decisions. So there's a great, the people that work for Volusia County Schools are great. And it's like nothing else, you may have an area where you've got someone that's not giving it their all, but that eventually come, rises to the top. And it's not unique to us, it happens everywhere. But as I said, I shared that article about Alachua County Schools, and it's one of the most in-depth articles I've ever seen a news source put out. I don't want to be Alachua County Schools. I want to ensure first and foremost that we can retain our staff, because I do believe the teacher and the para professional in the classroom is the most important. But they also can't do their job without the cafeteria workers and the bus drivers and the pers- the nurses in the clinic and the front desk staff and the principals. And it takes everybody. Not one person can do it. And I too have asked questions over the years about the district staff. But then, you know what I also started doing? I started asking other board members in other districts to share their information, or I asked information to be collected, so that I wasn't making just a statement based on my own feelings or what someone said to me. So I want to thank everyone, because there's some great things that we accomplished today. I want to thank every one of you for voting in support of the Deland Police Athletically, because those are our kids. And we did the right thing today to ensure that that program can continue to grow and move forward and be able to have the things that they need in place for those kids. And I want to thank every student and parent that came tonight, so we could celebrate all of what's happening in science, because Volusia County is on the cutting edge of science, and we have been for several years, and it's a great place to be. And I will say this, there are some issues that we have to overcome, because there's nowhere that doesn't have an issue. But it's how we approach those issues, to overcome them, that will determine whether or not we are putting our students first. And there are times I have stood alone by putting students first in this district, because there's no other reason to be here, in my opinion. And so I do want to thank everyone tonight, and it is, unless there's some other, just something else for discussion, it is 7:39 and we're adjourned.